I'm not ready, I'm sorry. Oh, what is that?
But.
But invisible fly.
Is it, you know how we keep nets on our end? Let me turn my ring up on. And this wasn't even cleaned up here.
Send a book.
Count. Of course she'll call me, she called nothing.
Good morning and welcome to the City of Chester Council Meeting for Wednesday, July ninth, twenty twenty-five. It is now ten a.m. and we are ready to get started. Um, I want to call up Reverend Robert Tate Junior from, uh, he's the pastor of New Bethel Mount Baptist in Wilmington, Delaware. Would you come up so and lead us in prayer, sir? Can we all stand?
Good morning, everybody. And to the City Council and lolly-dolly hi to everybody. Let us pray. Father God, we thank you once again for this day. Thank you for allowing us to assemble one more time, Lord, to discuss agendas, God, that you have planned, Lord God. We pray in the mighty name of Jesus, Lord, that everything said and done will be done decent and in order, Lord God. Oh, God, give us wisdom to understand what you have to work for us to do, Lord God, that we do it right, Lord God. If there's any confusion, God, correct it right now. Lord, we pray, God, that if there's any sick among us, Lord God, that you will heal, God. We pray, God, for if there's any who are mourning or lost one, Lord, that you will comfort them in a time such as this, Lord God. But, Lord, we ask that you will have your way in this meeting, Lord God, that you will get the glory, honor, and praise. We thank you for each council member. We thank you for each residence that's here today, God. Oh, God, do what you have to do, God, that we will have understanding of what we need to do to make this great city once again great again, Lord God. God, thank you for this time, thank you for this opportunity. We praise you, we glorify your name, and we can magnify you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
And amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Counselors Green.
Present.
Davis.
Present.
Gibson Williams.
Present.
Can I get a, a motion to approve the minutes from the previous meeting, July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five?
So moved.
Second.
Um, this, at this time, we'll have public comment on agenda items only. Are there any comments?
Councilwoman, can you go back in?
I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. So at this time now, we'll have public comment on agenda items only. Was everyone able to get an agenda that was placed on outside? Is there any old business? On council?
Old business, new business. Uh, just want to set a reminder for the Peace, Love, and Unity Festival, which will be held in front of City Hall on September the thirteenth. Um, as of today, we'll be accepting, uh, vendors. Um, so any vendors that would like to participate in the Peace, Love, and Unity Festival, please feel free to, uh, contact City Hall. You can contact the Parks and Rec Department and they will, uh, make sure you get a, uh, vendor application filled out. So, thank you.
Thank you, councilmen. Is there any other new business? Old business, new business? Okay, so we're going to move on to the readings, Madam Clerk.
Bill number three, first reading was on June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five. Ordinance number three of twenty twenty-five, an ordinance, an ordinance of City of Chester, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, amending Part thirteen, planning and zoning of the codified ordinances of the City of Chester for the purposes of, one, permitting smoke shops and tobacco stores in the CBD, which is known as the Central Business District, and MIC, which is Medium Industrial Commercial District by conditional use. Number two, establishing certain conditional use criteria for smoke shops and tobacco stores. Number three, defining drug paraphernalia stores, e-cigarette, e-liquid, electronic nicotine delivery systems, known as NS, hookah bar, mixed retail establishments, significant tobacco retailer, smoke shops and tobacco stores, tobacco, tobacco paraphernalia, tobacco products, vape products. And number four, repelling all ordinances or parts of ordinances inconsistent therewith.
So moved. I move that we pass number, bill number three on its second and final reading.
Uh, second that we pass bill number three on its last and final reading.
All in favor?
No.
No?
Madam Clerk.
Madam Clerk, I'm sorry.
Do you want anybody to question it? Any comments, questions or comments?
Are there any question and comments?
Counselors Green.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Gibson Williams.
Yes.
Resolution, whereas Reverend Dr. E. Irvin Millsaps was called to Pastor Shiloh Baptist Church on November first, nineteen ninety, with the aim of soul-saving through biblical education and showed a very strong commitment to the charge mandated to him. And whereas his preaching and teaching led to an increase in the membership of Shiloh, the creation of various church programs such as Deacons Training Class and the Drug and Alcohol Ministry, which has and is still making a lasting impact on countless lives in the City of Chester and Vicinity. And whereas Dr. Millsaps' vision for a Christian preschool that emphasized biblical training and academic excellence also led to an addition to Shiloh's original sanctuary and the establishment of the Shiloh Development Academy, known as SDA, in nineteen ninety-eight. And whereas Dr. Millsaps has been sought after as a preacher, teacher, lecturer, and revivalist throughout the Delaware Valley area. He was fervent in desire to serve in the local and national religious bodies, which included the National Baptist Convention, USA Incorporated.
I have spoken sorry. My apologies for the mal-humming, I am out of power.
The Pennsylvania National Baptist Convention, Incorporated, New Hope Baptist Association of Pennsylvania, and the West End Ministerial Fellowship of Chester and Vicinity. And whereas Dr. Millsaps faithfully served as pastor of Shiloh Baptist Church for twenty-three years and after much soul-searching, retired as the pastor in December of twenty thirteen, thus earning the distinction of being Shiloh's longest-serving pastor. Now therefore, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby authorize the installation of an honorary street sign renaming a portion of Central Avenue at West Seventh Street to Reverend Dr. E. Irvin Millsaps Way, recognizing his faithful service and leadership in the community. Further, it does authorize the Department of Public Works to order and install the aforementioned sign.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Green.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Gibson Williams.
Yes.
Resolution, whereas Vision Zero is a comprehensive strategy to eliminate all traffic-related deaths and severe injuries while promoting safe mobility for all. And whereas the twenty-four thousand, one hundred and thirty-two traffic crashes reported in Delaware County between twenty eighteen and twenty twenty-two have resulted in eight hundred and ninety-five serious injuries and one hundred and thirty lives lost. And whereas the health and safety of our residents is the utmost priority of the City of Chester. And whereas implementation of a Vision Zero strategy will improve resident health and safety, expand transportation options, and encourage the economic and environmental resiliency of the City of Chester. And whereas the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation Strategic Highway Safety Plan has committed to, towards Zef, zero deaths, excuse me, model of highway safety, which plans to achieve zero traffic fatalities by twenty fifty. And whereas Delaware County Comprehensive Plan Objective, TR two, identifies multiple policies in support of improving the safety of the county's transportation network and encourages municipalities to adopt Vision Zero policies to eliminate fatalities and serious injuries on roadways. And whereas roadway design, transportation safety, and mobility improvements adheres to the complete streets considerations identified in the Delaware County Comprehensive Plan and thereby help improve resident safety, reduce congestion, provide health and environmental benefit, and make the City of Chester and the county more resilient and economically competitive. And whereas Delaware County is developing a countywide Vision Zero Action Plan to build a safer transportation system for everyone and eliminate traffic-related deaths and severe injuries by twenty fifty. And whereas over twenty-three hundred residents in Delaware County have expressed support and participated in the Vision Zero Action Plan through meetings, interviews, comment forums, and walk audits. And whereas the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission is developing a long-range safety action plan, excuse me, action program with the goal of eliminating traffic-related deaths and severe injuries by twenty fifty. And whereas the City of Chester will join other municipalities around the nation in recognizing that crashes that result in death or severe injury are not inevitable, but largely preventable and stem in part from roadway design that insufficiently accounts for human error and protects multimodal transportation users. And whereas will join Delaware County and municipalities around the nation in committing to the elimination of traffic-related fatalities and injuries by the year twenty fifty. Now therefore, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby, number one, affirm that even one death or a serious injury on its roads is too many. Two, commit to, in any way deemed appropriate, the elimination of traffic-related fatalities and serious injuries by twenty fifty via a local Vision Zero initiative. And number three, commit to, in any way deemed appropriate, assisting in concurrent Vision Zero initiatives relevant to the City of Chester, including the Delaware County Vision Zero Action Plan.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Green.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Gibson Williams.
Yes.
Resolution, be it resolved that the City of Chester, Delaware County, Pennsylvania hereby request a multimodal transportation fund grant not to exceed a total of three million dollars from the Commonwealth Financing Authority to be used for pedestrian and vehicular safety improvements and the development of the East Coast Greenway. Be it further resolved that the City of Chester does hereby designate Mayor Stefan Roots and Candace Newsom, City Clerk, as the official or officials to execute all documents and agreements between the City of Chester and the Commonwealth Financing Authority to facilitate and assist in obtaining the requested grant.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Green.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Gibson Williams.
Yes.
Resolution, whereas the Pennsylvania Department of Community Development has prepared on behalf of the City of Chester and the Chester Economic Development Authority, known as CEDA, a Keystone Communities Enterprise Zone Designation Program application. And whereas eligible projects can apply to the state for enterprise zone tax credits within the designation boundary. And whereas CEDA administers economic development programs on behalf of the City of Chester through an approved cooperation agreement. Whereas, the enterprise zone boundaries are documented in Exhibit A attached here, too. Now therefore, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that CEDA is hereby authorized to file an application with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, Department of Community and Economic Development under the Keystone Communities Enterprise Zone Designation Program, known as the PROGRAM, in accordance with the boundary designated in Exhibit A. Further, the City of Chester is willing to, one, participate in the program; two, approves the five-year strategy, which incorporates the city's economic competitiveness plan, twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-five, and authorizes CEDA to represent the city.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Green.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Gibson Williams.
Yes.
Resolution, whereas the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania authorized award of a redevelopment assistance capital program, known as RACP, grant any amount of five hundred thousand dollars on behalf of Silvercare Skilled Nursing LLC and Silvercare Real Estate LLC for the Silvercare Behavioral and Memory Rehabilitation Project, known as the PROJECT. And whereas the Chester Economic Development Authority was designated as the applicant to partner with Silvercare Skilled Nursing LLC and Silvercare Real Estate LLC as sub-applicants in connection with the administration of the project. And whereas one of the RACP requirements is the submission of an executed cooperation agreement between the city as the host municipality and the sub-applicants in which the city approves the project and which obligates the city to reimburse the Commonwealth for any RACP grant reimbursements that may later be determined to have been ineligible expenses for the project. And whereas this matter has been reviewed and considered. Now therefore, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve, number one, that the cooperation agreement by and between the City of Chester and the sub-applicants is hereby approved; and number two, that the mayor and/or his designee is hereby authorized to execute the agreement and to take such steps as may be necessary to implement the intent of this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Green.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Gibson Williams.
Yes.
Did everyone get a chance to sign in to make public comment? If you didn't, please, um, sign. Also, before we, uh, go to public comment, I just want to, uh, recognize our newly-appointed, uh, receiver. This is his first council meeting. He's not a stranger to City Hall, but this first council meeting as receiver, so welcome aboard.
And could you come up and you have a few words that you want to give? Are you okay? Sure. Thank you.
Myself and Councilman Wester had an opportunity to meet with him last week. Very fruitful conversation and look forward to conversations moving forward and working together for the betterment of the City of Chester, so. Think something from our, uh, Parks and Recreation Director.
Yes, he's going to introduce Mr. Jonathan King, um, with a report on the summer food program.
Good morning, good morning, Council.
Good morning.
Residents.
Morning.
It's my pleasure today to introduce our new, uh, summer food program coordinator slash director, Mr. Jonathan King.
Mr. King is no stranger to the city or City Hall. He's a former community liaison and he's also, uh, working with Safe Corridors to protect our kids as they go to and from school, so welcome aboard in a different capacity. Thank you so much. Uh, good morning, everyone. Good morning, community. Good morning, Madam Council, Mr. Councilmen and staff and the employees of the City of Chester. I, I am very honored and grateful, um, to be the director for the summer food program. Um, I'm gonna honestly tell you, I'm, I'm doing it because I want to see the city be better, not for no other reason. I am excited to say that our first day went off with a really big bang. Not only all of the spots were covered because we had some last-minute stuff going on, but we were ever, we were able at this point, I think, to the day, the day is the third day, um, to register almost a hundred kids already. I am also, um, happy to say that all of the supervisors and our site monitors, um, that are working with us have been consistent and caring and, um, very cooperative with our community and our children to make sure that they eat lunch. So I am grateful for that. Um, we are still working out the kinks of anything, um, that we're not sure of that needs to happen to be better. I am open to the community for any suggestions, any places that you think that we may have to add and we can't add. Uh, Mark, my boss, one of my bosses, um, I'm sure he can definitely explain to you why because people think we can just open up a spot and we can give kids lunches and it don't work like that, right? There's a process and a protocol. My phone, that's my personal phone number to one of my cell phones that is up there on the flyer. Um, if there's any issues, please call me. Um, the responsibility of the organization and structure of this program is on me. Um, if there's an issue with any of the people that are working on the sites, please call me. We will address it. Um, if there's something that we need to do that we're not doing, please call me so we can find out and I can ask Mark what we need to do to make it better. Um, we want the city to be greater, we want it to be cleaner, we want our children to be happy, and we want them to eat every day. So I am honored for this opportunity and I will do my best not to let you guys down. If anybody have any questions, or should I take any questions? Jonathan King, Director of the Summer Food Program.
I do have a, a question and I've spoke with both you and Mr. Alexander, um, in regards to the sites. And so the one concern that I had was the one, uh, referring to some village. Is there a solution that we've come up with so that we could service the children in that area?
Yes, I, I have spoken to Asia and we're going to try to add that site to the program.
As soon as?
As soon as possible.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm done, I'm getting back to work.
So now it's time for public comment. Ms., uh, Rose Marie Sewell. And what's the, and Ms. Coleman. Yes.
Good morning, members of council. Madam Clerk Candace Newsom, who is my sister. My name is Rose Marie Sewell and I'm the owner of six-ten West Sixth Street. My husband and I bought that property in nineteen ninety-six. And six-twelve West Sixth Street, which is attached to, is owned by the Gallo Brothers. Overall, I want to say about the Gallo Brothers, they're a fungus in a plague on our community, especially to my home. Since they were allowed to purchase that property in late two thousand, the house caught fire in December two thousand by a previous owner who had a mortgage. He went into foreclosure. The house could have still been saved, even when the Gallo Brothers purchased it as a tax sale from the county. And the rest is a hellish nightmare, excuse my French, from different animals nesting in my home and making it their home and not paying any rent. Um, we had to pay to have them removed. And eventually, as I've talked to different members of council and different mail, mayors over the two decades, to no avail, the house eventually started to crumble. I actually lived in it when the roof collapsed and a size came in. Um, every now and then, they've gotten something from the inspectors. They came in and pretend to do something, pretend to cut the grass. Now, it's nothing but a shell and a dumping site. I think I've sold these pictures to Councilwoman Gibson Williams, a gentleman here from the Fire Department back there, um, and, uh, this young woman here. Um, I've been trying, me and my husband, to get in on the demolition list and all, so I've heard, we don't have no money, we don't have no money, but it's a safety concern. And at this point, my husband and I moved out because we just got tired and we didn't feel as though it was safe to be in there if my grandchildren are in there. And, um, eventually, I mean, I have gone through different homeowners, um, insurance because I got dropped from one because of their property, picked up by another, but I'm spending four hundred and twelve dollars a month for a home only because the condition of next door. And, yes, ma'am.
So we, we give you three minutes.
Sure.
Alright, so she wanted to speak too.
Yes, no problem. I'm about to get ready to get our.
It's, it's okay, because we're going to make sure you're taken care of.
Hi, everyone, um, my name is Renee Coleman.
Yes.
Um, I don't have much to say. Um, I just bought the property, uh, six-fourteen, that's next door to six-twelve. Uh, I am not looking to make six-fourteen a forever home. Um, I am trying to make it a investment property. But I don't want it to be a problem for the next people that actually move in. The side of the wall is starting to crumble now. I don't, I have a seventeen-year-old, a, a thirteen-year-old and an autistic seven-year-old. He loves to play, they love to play in that little, like, walkway area and now I don't want them to because the wall is starting to bulge out a little. Um, that's all I really have to say about the, the property six-twelve. Thank you.
Thank you both for coming and as I, I spoke to you this morning, there are directors here and you can speak to. You want to raise your hand, Ms. Nona, Ms. Judy? You can speak with them about your concerns and they, they will take care of you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I was in short. I just found out today and that's really nice about Reverend Millsap getting a portion of Seventh and Central Avenue dedicated to him. In April of twenty twenty-four, a portion of Seventh and Central Avenue was dedicated to Candace and I grandmother, Rosie Lee Redding. So I'm just curious, do you get rid of her sign and replace it with him? Or you put up another sign for Reverend Millsap?
I don't have an answer to that right, right at this moment.
I mean, it'd be.
Councilwoman, I could answer.
Okay.
Uh, Mayor, Mayor Roots is aware that, uh, Seventh Street has an honorary street sign for, uh, her and so this, uh, this resolution was to rename Central, so it, they are, they'll actually be on top of each other, but the names are for different, like, one's for Central, the other's for Seventh.
No problem, just as long as you don't get rid of my grandmother's.
No, that will remain, don't worry.
You want to see a fight? Thank you.
Thank you, Justin. Uh, next we will have Mr. Joseph Morse Junior.
Counsel, Madam Clerk, Mr. Solicitor.
Counsel, Madam Clerk, Mr. Solicitor, residents all, good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Joseph Morse, 2513 West Seventh Street, Chester, PA. I am a longtime resident of the city, retired firefighter, serving the city for 32 years. I am here on behalf of the Official Committee of Retirees. And we were appointed for the city's Chapter 9 bankruptcy case. And I have three of my colleagues here, Chuck Rogunis, Alan Davis, and Mark Saranowski. Chuck was a firefighter for 31 years, Alan, police officer for 27, and Mark, highway department for 30. Now, we're a committee, retired committee, we represent the interests of retirees and their beneficiaries, protecting their accrued pensions and retirement benefits during the bankruptcy process. Now, we're here today to, because on June 11, 2025, we committed, filed a complaint with the bankruptcy court due to serious concerns over how the receiver is conducting the sale of the city water assets. And for those who do not have the opportunity to view the complaint, I believe that every potential buyer for the city's water should be explored, whether private, public, or governmental. But however, the receiver is solely, well, I'm gonna say, not this receiver, but this receiver before, was solely soliciting bids that resulted in ownership of the assets only by municipal and other government entities, rather than exploring the standalone and public, non-governmental private sectors. Now, as you are aware, in 2021, the city conducted its own request for the bids for the water assets, which resulted in a $60 million bid for the Chester Water Authority and two others, Aqua Pennsylvania and Pennsylvania Water Authorities with an estimate of $410 million, Pennsylvania, $425 million. Now, that's a lot of money being left on the table right now. And we're aware that the receiver has cited a notion maintaining affordable rates for all the Chester Water Authority customers as a reason for limiting the potential buyers. However, the receiver duty, it runs with the city and its residents and there's no explanation why maintaining affordable rates for the residents of the city cannot be achieved in the connection of the sale of the water assets to a private sector buyer through the creation of a rate stabilization fund or similar mechanism as part of the sale. Now, to be clear, the retiree committee is not advocating any buyer right now. We are advocating for a more open and rational sale process, one that ensures that all potential bids from both public and private entities are received and considered to obtain maximum fair market. Now, during the mayor's State of the City address, he may mention that the city was open for business. And our stand is if you can't pay your bills and you can't provide essential services for your residents, how can you be open for business? Now, the residents and the retirees of Chester would deserve nothing less than a process that ensures the city's success for revol- revol- revitalization or get back on its feet, support the current residents and safeguard the retirees' financial and health securities. Now, while the receiver is technically representative of the city in this Chapter 9 bankruptcy case, he is not a public official, a public elected official, but you are.
Sir?
Yes, ma'am.
About 10 more seconds.
Representing the group, I thought I had five.
Give him two minutes.
Yeah, he already did.
Okay. All right.
And I'm almost finished.
You're good.
Almost finished. You won't have to serve me more times. Now, to conclude, we invite mayor and council and their legal team without the receiver to have a sit-down with us so we can get on one accord to make, move forward to make the city where it should be, where it could be, and to protect the retirees' pensions and the benefits and to safeguard the rates for the residents with the sale of the water company. And thank you for your time. And if you need to sit down with us, we have the chair, Chuck Rogunis, vice chair, Alan Davis, you can set up. If you don't want to be public, we go Zoom, we'll go Teams, we'll go, just as long as we sit down and have a conversation. And that's all, we just want to be kept in the loop and see, find out what's going on. And I'm pretty sure everybody else wants to know too, because we are Chester and what Chester makes, makes Chester. Amen.
Thank you.
And I do have a copy of the complaint, sir, if you wish to have it.
Thank you.
I don't think council has a problem with sitting down with either of you to discuss the areas of concern that you have. And earlier, I spoke with Mr. Kapoor and he said that he would sit with you guys as well. So you guys can schedule something with his office and you can meet with him.
That's all we want.
Yes, and if you set up a time with us, I'm sure that we will all be able to accommodate you. Is that good for you?
Yeah, that's good for me. But I want to be clear though, that council, we're not involved in the bankruptcy process. The bankruptcy process is solely on the receiver and his team. And so they make the decisions in terms of the bankruptcy process and the monetization, the sale, whatever you want to call it. So I don't want to lead you on that we can make any decisions in terms of the bankruptcy or the retiree committee.
Yeah, I understand.
You know.
I understand.
But we will listen, you know.
Yes.
As your public officials, as the people that you guys elected, we will listen, hear your concerns. And you know, if there is something we can do, you know, we'll do our best. But I don't want to give you the false hope that we as a council can do anything or make decisions in terms of.
The thing is that we understand that, but we do want to know what you're thinking. You know, as far as that goes, if you have any views, you know, we could sit down and talk about it.
Thank you, and I want to thank all of you for your service too. 20 and 30 years commendable, so thank you for your service to the city of Chester.
Next, we have Mr. Nasir Jahad.
Let me say good morning, council.
Good morning.
Good morning.
City of Chester. Community and visitors. You know, I went to bring this up before and it's real simple. I just wanted to speak on, let me read so I won't mess up. I just want to speak on a reminder. This is a reminder and a suggestion. It's a reminder because I think this is already on the books and it's a suggestion for those that come up. And that is, when we open up for prayer, when we open up for prayer, it should be opened up in the name of God. We all can agree, it's only one God. We might call him by different names, but it's only one God. And when we start to naming God and opening up here, it brings dissension, like in the hearts. It might offend some people. So we come here together for the betterment of the city. We come here together to work, to put work in, to get things done. So to mention other than God, sometimes that, you know, that brings dissension. Because it's in a situation or audience such as this, we have different ethnic backgrounds, we have different religions. A part of being, I want to say, a public speaker for religion, that should be always kept in mind. Because again, we don't want to offend no one. And we come here to work together. So I just wanted to bring that up because I think, and I'm always already sure, that's on the records, it's on the archives. I'm still working to get it. I've been working with my, well, not my, but the chaplain, police chaplain, who used to come, you know, we was different people. And I know I used to come here before and we had that done. So this is just a reminder, a suggestion, offending no one, offending no one. We here to work together. So to work together, we gotta have prayer. Prayer is a part of it. Prayer is definitely a part of it. Let's pray in the name of God that covers everybody and offends nobody. Thank you.
Ms. Livia Smith.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I just wanted to say, it's interesting what councilmen said, you know, they have no power to do anything about the situations with this, with the bankruptcy, but I just wanted to bring up something to the public. There's a Senate bill, 632, and you can look it up. And it was introduced April 11, 2025, and they're amending an Act of 1953. And this bill would permit struggling municipalities, that's Chester, in second-class counties to dissolve themselves voluntarily with their governmental duties taken over by the county. Now, I know, if you don't know, that Delaware County is a second-class county. So I just want to bring that to your attention because it seems like all these things is coming into place that we're struggling for some reason. And if we don't get some things right and this bill gets passed, this is what will happen. And your services that you get locally will be taken over by the county. So therefore, that'll put you on a list of things that you can't receive because of financial situations. So I would say to the council, y'all need to look into that bill. You need to talk to your state rep, you need to talk to your state senator, and you need to make sure, if you're in agreeance with it, so be it. But I don't think that will be beneficial to the city of Chester. I just want you to know, y'all can look that bill up, Senate Bill 632, and you can read it in its entirety. And it's very interesting how all these things is taking place, you're getting taken over, and just look at the hierarchy. Our school just has been taken over. Now, your city's been taken over and your local government can't say anything about it because they've been taken over and there's rules in place. They're trying to sell all your water utilities, they're trying to hike up your rates. So just think now, if you're paying a dollar, it's going to probably be five dollars. I just want y'all to have something just to be thinking about, okay? And lastly, and secondly, I just wanted to say about the playgrounds. Are the playgrounds going to be open this year? I see you had food service for certain parts of the city. I didn't see a whole lot of east side covered, I guess them children won't be eating this year. But just to FYI, Washington Park, I didn't see them on the list. Are there being playgrounds open as they have in the past, okay? Thank you very much.
Mark, Mr. Alexander, could you come up, please?
Good morning, once again. As far as the playground equipment, we do have things in place where we're trying to replace the equipment. We have grants that we're trying to get. Of course, everybody knows that the funding here in the city is low, but we're not using that as an excuse. So we're trying very hard to try to improve our playgrounds. Far as Washington Park, it was taken off the list by the state for some odd reason and we're still trying to find out why. That's it.
Thank you. I do have a question though, I'm sorry, Mr. Alexander, in regards to how the playgrounds get selected. Ms. Smith mentioned that it was only a few on the east side and there's a plethora of programs on the west side of town.
Well, far as I know, and excuse me, everybody, this is my first year doing this, so I'm still finding out things as we go. The state kind of chooses what playgrounds that benefits from the grant program, that money that we receive. So it's chosen based on that. But I can look deep into that and find out why.
And do they, the data that they've had previously relating to like how many children get service, you guys have data on that too, right?
Yes, yes, we have the records from last year that Mr. King and I have been looking into. Also, everything is based on the turnout too. Some of the areas over the east side were shut down due to the low turnout as well.
That's important to know, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
There's only Chester Park is the east side one, all of them on the west side.
Chester Park and Crosby Square. And I think they're looking to add Sun Village. Ms. Freeman, you're next.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay, I have a couple of issues. First issue is 1002 Tillman Street. That house is where my uncle resides and his next-door neighbor, their yard is literally now in his yard. I went and took pictures so I can show them to you. It doesn't make sense to me how people own things and they don't take care of it. If you really care about your city, you should care about your home. But when whoever owns the property were asked to cut down their branches and stuff, their response was, if you don't like it, you cut it yourself. I have a problem with that. Especially when, you know, your wife is coming home and their walkway, the branches is literally inside. And she was met by a strange man that she didn't know. And if my uncle wasn't there, I don't know what could have happened to her. I have a problem because, like I said in the past, I care about my city and Chester is not a bad place, it's just some of the people that are not nice. My next issue is, we all know we have no hospital. There are people who are gravely ill. I don't know what's going on, what can be done, but I just feel it was a real disservice. That hospital has been here for eons. I had several family members that worked there, my grandfather worked there for 30 years. The next issue is the police. On Sixth and Jeffrey, I was making a turn and a car almost hit me. And I was like, wow. So as I turned, I then met up with a police officer. And I flagged him down and I said, excuse me. Guess what his response was to me? Want me to tell you?
We're listening. You just said it.
What? And I said, is that how you were raised to greet anyone? What? So now my issue is, the people that we have hired and put in place to protect us, once again, did we hire the right people? Why are they really here?
Ten more seconds, I'll give you.
I got you. But that's it. I'm gonna be cool today. I got a headache. But I really need something to be done with that property.
So when you finish here, when the meeting is over, you can speak with Ms. Nona, um, Ms. Watson, and Ellen I, and you can also speak to our commissioner. And, um, she'll handle your issue.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Excuse me, Councilwoman, I have a question. Ms. Freeman?
Yes, ma'am.
What's the address of the neighboring house? Is it one thousand or is it one thousand four?
You know what? It's both. It's actually both. And one thousand, their roof is falling, which is now making his side fall. So it's on both sides. And it's hard to detect. I don't even know who owns, or if it, if it's even part of the other property because it's like fenced in. It's, it's, it's a mess, it looks like a jungle, actually.
And you said you had pictures?
Yes, ma'am.
You can show them to Ms. Watson as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Freeman.
Ms. Gilda Calder?
Good morning. Good morning, Council, and good morning to all. Um, I didn't know who I could address this to, but on June the thirteenth, one of my neighbors passed, the coroner took him out of the house. So from this, you know, on up, the, I don't know who owns the house. I don't know his relatives. He has cats. Um, the male is piling up. Because of the rain and all, well, he wasn't really a neat person. So a lot of the stuff is, you know, still there. He has trash, and the trash is gated. It's, um, you know, locked. You're getting the fumes from garbage and all. So when it rains, that does a little, you know? But you're starting to get, you know, uh, flies and things like that within the neighborhood. I don't know who would be responsible to cut the grass because even the sidewalks are getting cluttered. He has, um, different trees and things in the yard. And of course, they're growing, you know, like that. Um, the back, this is a one-way street. In the back are our house. I live, because like the street is, like my, uh, gate is connected to it. Um, because the stuff is growing, you know, it's coming over into my property. So I don't know if the city would cut that and find out who the owner is to correct that because when you come into, um, Houston Street, you have to go into upland. And that's one of the houses that you see before you actually come through all the way to the Park of Houston.
Tom? You have an address?
The address is two thirty Houston Street. It's a twin house. And because I, you know, you can't just stop it from the mailman. And like I said, one of his outside, um, like say doors, the screen door is open. So it could be, you know, people could come and break in or do whatever. Like I said, I don't know. It was more or less like a family house, you know, like one family, then somebody else's family, somebody else's kids. He was, as far as I know, he was the only one living there at, at the time. I don't know what caused whatever. But I know because of how he was living, he was covering up the drain. I had calls in May through stormwater because he was covering that drain up. They do come out every now and then, the stormwater people, but they're not cleaning that up. And stuff is still growing up from his house into the.
So when the meeting is over, we'll talk to you about that, to see what kind of help we can get you.
I'm sorry?
When the meeting is over, we'll talk to you.
Oh, okay.
And see what kind of help we can give you. Okay? And I want to double back because I made an error, uh, with Ms. Freeman. Zoning and planning is who you can talk to about the issues that you're having, okay? Sorry about that.
Kim said no.
No? So would it, it still be? Ellen I? Over to the yard? Okay. 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 Thank, thank you for the clarification. You're doing a great job. Well, that's all.
Yes, ma'am.
I was just curious, you know, when you're gonna do it again? You and I talked on Rose Resul, I talked to you about how proud I am about my son.
Yes, ma'am.
Senior Chief Petty Officer.
I remember.
Mark Russell, United States Navy.
Yes, I remember. Um, so we're still, um, taking all applications.
We still, we could still, that's another, we still can use that old application?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes. Um, and we need at least ten applications to put in a full order. As long as we have at least ten applications that we can do another order.
I can see I forgot to work on that. I know other people who have veterans and active duty.
That sounds good to me.
Okay, and we can still use it because a lot of people were questioning when I was talking to other people that it still had that March date on there.
Yeah, so we can change the format of the application and change some dates. I'll get with Justin, um, who handles the website and so we can get everything updated.
Double check and I go back and look at that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Of course. So we're still waiting to get those new signs put up in regards to the, um, like the bucket truck and everything. The reason the old signs came down is because it wasn't super presentable leaving them up on the fence like that. Um, they need to be hung up so everyone can see them on the poles like they are in other communities. But we still need to get the, uh, operation and the people together who can actually put that up together for us. Um, at the time, I think the, was it Del Cora? Del Cora was giving us the, uh, resources to, you know, hang the banners up. That didn't necessarily work out because the poles weren't up to code. We needed certain length of poles. So we were waiting to get all the small pieces put together so that the signs can go back up. There was just a lot of hoops and jumps and everything just to do that. So the, right now, the signs are in City Hall and we're waiting to get them put up. You're welcome.
Does Council have anything else?
No.
Then I will.
VJ.
Oh, VJ, I'm sorry. You're supposed to run down the aisle like The Price is Right.
I'm sorry, VJ, before you speak, I don't want to interrupt. Um, I did notice that Mr. Nelson walked in and he usually signs. Did you want to sign and say anything before we ended the meeting? I know prior that has become a problem in the community. We want to give everybody opportunity to speak, especially since this meeting has been going so productively well. And I just wanted to ask.
I, I want, I wanted to come, um, not as a gripe, but, uh, as to say that, um, the personnel from my last gripe has been taken care of, um, Julie has been on top of the job. Um, the second thing about the grass that we cut, um, people are buying these lots up in the city and we're cutting these lots. Are we fining these people? Uh, are we just eating the cost of, because you guys are doing a great job on cutting lots. And I know, um, some of the lots that you cut, um, are owned by people. And are we, um, the taxpayer assuming that cost? Are we gonna put that cost on the owners?
I believe we send the, uh, owners a bill and sometimes, uh, if we have to, we put a lien on the property. So if they sell it, or so the city will get the cost off the top of my correct?
You, you can cite the property owners for high grass and weeds, but there's a legal process that can take a period of time. So sometimes the best resolution is actually cut the grass and then worry about whether we can recoup those, those costs legally down the road.
I, I know, I know for a fact that we can recoup the cost illegally. I think the, I think the way you're going is the right way to go. But I just don't want to constantly keep paying for someone else, uh, that doesn't live here, that's buying the property. Uh, we should be, uh, I know I have property in Philadelphia and they will cut your grass and send you a thirty-five hundred dollar bill for a lot, which gets you to understand, Nelson, you better get up here and cut your own lot. And I just want to know, and I think it's fair. Uh, I just want to know that we should, if we not, we should be starting a legal process of, um, charging these people. And, um, I know if they get a natural bill, it woke me up. And, and, and it was all fair. I think it's all fair. Thank you. Thanks, thanks for asking to, um, having me to, Council.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Is it about the same issue that you've already had? We're, we're gonna let Mr. VJ come up? No, we're gonna let Mr. VJ come up. And, um, if we have time after that, we may be able to entertain the question.
Uh, uh, good morning, uh, members of council. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. It is, uh, it is an honor to be here. Um, I, uh, I look forward to attending, uh, these council meetings as Receiver Dowyrie did. I am just o- offering to council as well. I'm happy to come up at the end of public comment and answer questions that folks may have or council may have as well, uh, depending upon obviously your availability and, and mine. So thank you again for the opportunity to, uh, to be here. I wanted to address, um, uh, just a couple of issues that came up today. Uh, I also wanted to talk a little bit about the MFRAC that we had yesterday. So as many of you all know, every two weeks, there is a committee that is called the Municipal Financial Recovery Advisory Committee, or MFRAC. Uh, we have a public meeting, uh, Councilman Davis is part of that, uh, part of that committee. Uh, and yesterday I spoke a little bit about, kind of, um, introduced myself and, and answered some of the questions that had been raised as well. So I, I encourage, I'm not gonna go through that today, but I do encourage folks, uh, to, uh, to take a look at that. Um, and, uh, because it's answered some of the questions that have been raised. And I sent all of council this morning, uh, to Controller Taylor as well, um, the PowerPoint that we had from yesterday that hopefully answered some of those questions. And again, at, at any point, if you all would like to meet, I'm more than happy to, uh, to, to do that. Um, just wanted to raise a, just wanted to address a couple of specific issues that came up on today's council meeting. Um, and, uh, and again, I, I'm welcome, happy to answer others and, and happy to, uh, to, to make this a, um, uh, a regular appearance if, if, if council so desires. Um, the first was, uh, Ms. Smith had raised the issue of Senate Bill six thirty-two. Um, uh, uh, dealing with, uh, dissolution of a municipality within a second-class county. Um, I did look that up, um, and the, the text of Senate Bill sixty-two, or at least the description of this, um, uh, is one of a voluntary dissolution. So this is from the legislative website. Senate Bill six thirty-two is an act amending the Act of July twenty-eighth, nineteen fifty-three, known as the second-class county code, providing for the voluntary uh, dissolution of the existing form of governance of a municipal corporation located in a county of the second class and the creation of unincorporated districts of counties of the second class. And it goes on, but I want to be very clear about this. Um, you know, my goal here, my role here as the receiver is to try and get Chester back on its feet as quickly as possible. Um, and to hand the keys back over to the elected officials. Um, I readily admit I am not an elected official. I'm an appointed and judicially confirmed official. Uh, you all are elected officials. Uh, and, and, and I understand that and I respect that, uh, that role. Um, our desire here as, as there's, my desire here as the receiver, as I talked a little bit about yesterday, and this will address some of the, some of the, I think, the important concerns that the retiree committee is raising, is, uh, I have a job to try and balance the interests of many groups. Um, as the receiver, as, as Councilman Green did, is correct to say, I, I, the receiver stands in the, in the shoes of the city with respect to the bankruptcy. Uh, while you all certainly have your opinions and, and the public will ask you about yours, in terms of the decisions, um, with respect to the bankruptcy, that, that is within the receiver's power. And, and Councilman Green is, is absolutely, uh, right about that. The difficulty with that, of course, is that there's a lot of different groups out here, right? There's retirees, there's employees, um, there's, very importantly, residents, uh, as well, who, who are concerned about the services that they're, that they're provided. The ability to, um, finance those services is, is really important. And as you heard today, and, and I kept track of this, I think there were at least six people talking about issues that deal with quality of life, right? Ellen I, codes, uh, Ms. Watson, um, uh, her, her department here. That is an area, as all of you know, that we're focused on. That is, that is our, we're focused on all operations, but primarily speaking, it's, it's, it's been Ellen I. Um, and it's because of the same issues that have, that have been raised. The, uh, abandoned properties, high weeds and grass, nuisance violations. It's part of the reason why, um, the city implemented a rental registry program. It is going through that process. So that is, that is incredibly, incredibly important. Obviously, we, we need funding in order to, to, to continue those services. Um, Chester's in a different, difficult financial condition, but, but as I said yesterday, and I truly believe there is a path forward for the city of Chester. I truly believe that. And this is a unique opportunity for, um, residents, for elected officials to really craft what the city will be, not just in the short term, but for generations to come. This is a really, really unique opportunity here. And, and I know a lot of the folks who are in this room right now are people who care deeply about the city, who come to council meetings, who care enough to raise issues in, in front of council. Um, and it takes guts to do that, right? It's, it's a lot easier just to stay quiet and complain on social media or whatever. Uh, it's a lot different when you're, when you're here, you're, you're, you're in front of a microphone and, um, you're, you're asking for help. Um, and, and I have a great deal of respect for people who do that. And obviously a great deal of respect for, for elected officials as well. Um, I wanted to just briefly, if I could, touch on the issue of the monetization because that was something that, that the retiree committee raised. Um, I also want to be clear here, and I, and this will be a little bit of a plug, but at the next MFRAC meeting on July twenty-ninth, we are gonna be taking sort of a deeper dive into monetization. Um, so I, I do want to respectfully answer some of the questions here, but on January, excuse me, July twenty-ninth, uh, on the receiver's Facebook page at one P M., and, uh, we will be, we will be looking at that in, in more detail. And if folks are not able to attend that, it's all recorded and you can, you can look at it at your, um, at your own, at your own leisure. So a- as the, as the, um, as the retiree committee, uh, official said, the, um, uh, both the former receiver and I were named in a complaint, uh, in bankruptcy court uh, because, uh, of the restriction that we put on the procurement process for the water assets, that they had to remain publicly owned. And, which is essentially means you can't sell it to a private company. So we can talk, just be, be really honest about that. And, um, and in yesterday's MFRAC, um, to the question of, are we gonna sell the CWA to a private company? Receiver, Receiver Dowyrie's answer was no, and my answer is, is also no. And, and I want to respectfully explain a little bit of why. Um, I also want to say I take no offense to the retiree committee, uh, and their position. Um, if I were in their shoes, I would be doing the same thing. If my pension, if I were concerned about my pension and I were concerned about my retiree healthcare, I would be looking for every possible way that I could in order to, to preserve those benefits. So I just want to say, you know, not like it, I, I think we, this has been done in a, in a very respectful manner. I, I, I take personally no offense. That's, it's part of why I'm here. It's part of the job of the receiver to, uh, um, to have those discussions. And, and again, I'm, I'm glad that they, that they brought them here because it allows us to have the conversation about them. Um, from my perspective, um, I believe that keeping the city's water assets in public hands is in the best interests of residents. Um, I believe that, uh, because, um, what history has shown is that when you, when private companies own water assets or, or sewer assets, their rates are higher than publicly owned. And we've seen that in studies. We've also done our own analysis, um, as part of this process. And you can see that the private entities, um, have higher rates. Um, and that's an impact on Chester residents, right? We want to keep fees and taxes as low as possible. With, with what was passed in Congress last week, uh, there's a- in Congress last week, there's a good chance a lot of other community members are maybe suffering as well in the future, and we want to minimize the impact on that. And increased rates, to me, is something that we certainly want to avoid. The other point that I'll make that was raised here was kind of a question of something called a rate stabilization fund. And so the idea here is basically, is there a way that if you, let's say if you were to sell this to a private entity, you create this fund, and what that fund does is it keeps the rates, instead of the rate payer paying the rates to the private entity, money comes from that fund to pay, to help pay for the rates. So that kind of keeps rates lower. That's the argument. There's two issues with that. The first is, generally speaking, those rate stabilization funds are funded from the proceeds of the sale. So all you're really doing is transferring dollars from the sale to the rate, the money has to come from somewhere, right? It doesn't just magically appear, right? So effectively, what that's doing is that's reducing the sale price. So we want to be clear about that first. Like, it's not like this is found or free money. The other issue is eventually that stabilization fund goes away. And when that goes away, what happens? Usually after a 10-year period, you see rates spike. And so you have, so from our perspective, again, we're trying to look long-term here. We're trying to look for the, in the long-term interest of the residents, making sure that we have financial and operational, we have a financial and operational plan that provides for vital and necessary services over time. And so that's part of the concern that we would have, even if you would create this type of rate stabilization fund. Because again, even if you say we're going to keep rates low, what you're essentially doing is creating, you're keeping rates artificially low. And what means, at some point, it's going to have to go up. It just does, right? And so that's a significant concern of mine. There's also the issue of water, which is a natural resource, right? And as a public good, from my perspective, I believe it should remain publicly owned, the same position that Receiver Dowyrie had. And again, we'll talk a little bit more about this, you know, as we go on. But the retiree committee is exactly right here in terms of the responsibility that I have as the receiver to work in the best interests of all creditors, right? This is the balancing test here. And that is something that we're trying to work for, work together on with everybody involved here. And so I appreciate the fact that they came here and are raising the issue, because again, it's a critically important issue for them. I do want to end on what I kind of think is a little bit of an irony here, and do allow me to at least kind of make a joke for myself. I just want to note the irony of all this for everybody who's watching. For years, both Receiver Dowyrie and I have been accused falsely by a safe CWA organization of wanting to privatize the water system. There were a lot of press releases that went out about that, a lot of demonization, a lot of phone calls to DCD that somehow we were trying to privatize the water system. We are being sued. I am being sued. Just want to be clear here. I am being sued. My name is on the caption, you can read it if you see it, for not privatizing the water assets. So hopefully, we can kind of put that stuff aside here and be really clear. Our position, my position, is that we're not going to sell the water assets to a private company. So I certainly appreciate the opportunity here to counsel. I totally appreciate the opportunity to speak here before council. If you all have any questions for me, happy to answer them. Also happy to come back during your next council meeting and do this as well if you all find it helpful.
And Vijay, you forgot to note that this entire matter depends upon how the Supreme Court decides the case.
That's exactly right. So can, Mr. Slistrier, thank you for that. There's two other points that, again, I think are important, and thank you for raising that. Number one is, even if you took the position to say that these assets need to be privatized, should be privatized, you won't be able to do it unless the city is successful in the Supreme Court matter. Just, that's first off, just from a legal perspective. The second issue, again, and this is maybe something that folks don't necessarily know, but if you were to also sell it to a private entity, right, sell the water assets to a private entity, there needs to be approval by the Pennsylvania Public Utility Commission of that sale. So it's not just that, you know, you could come to an agreement. You would then have to take that in front of the PUC, right, where I assume there would also be a fair amount of litigation going on. So again, you know, certainly understand the position of the committee, but just want to get all the, kind of all, make sure everybody's up to speed here in terms of kind of how we're looking at this issue and what are the relevant factors that we have to balance.
And thank you for that. But I do want to be clear, because I did watch the EMFRAC meeting yesterday, and then I've seen a quote today that the receiver confirmed that he's not selling the water authority, which is, and the quote was wrong, because it's not that you're not selling the water authority, it's that you're not selling it to a private company. Is that correct?
That is correct. Yes. Yes.
And so, you know, I want people to understand that the water authority will be monetized for sale, however you want to put it, at some point. And, you know, whether it's to a private company or a public company, it is inevitable that the rates will go up eventually. Is that correct?
Well, again, and that's what we have to focus.
Because the money has to come from somewhere.
Well, the rates are going to go up regardless of whether or not it gets monetized or not, right? So the issue, because, you know, capital goes up and whatnot. So, but to your point, Councilman, you know, if there is, money does have to come from somewhere. You're exactly right. What we are hoping, what our goal is to do, right, because we want to minimize any impact we have on rates, right, is to try and figure out some type of structure, right, that minimizes the impact on residents, right? Is that something that could be done over a multi-year period, for example, right? So it eased, so it, again, addresses the needs of the city financially, because we need it, right? Like, let's be clear, our tax base, you know, does not cover our operations. It just, it doesn't. And so, and we have a significant, I'll call it kind of an IOU, right, to mostly the police pension fund, right, for MMOs that were not paid in the past. And there's no way we're going to be able to address those issues unless we have some type of monetization. So first off, thank you for noting that quote, because you're exactly right. And anyone who wants to watch what I said, it is recorded. So you can watch it, you could transcribe it, you know, it's on the Facebook page. My words are there. But to your point, Councilman, yes. Would rates go up? Yes. But the question is, how can we minimize the impact on that?
I guess it's a matter of how much they will go up, how big the increase will be at some point.
And again, this is the balance, right? Because then you ask the question of how much money does the city need? And that question, that's determined by how much the city needs, right? And that's not just an operational question, right? It's also a question for the retirees, because they're looking at, how would the city fund their pensions and retiree healthcare? So that's, you know, those are just a couple of the parties, right? We have other folks as well, but that's the situation.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Well, I certainly look forward to being able to meet with you, especially about the structure.
Yes.
Of everything. And I'm glad that you guys will be able to have a conversation as well with the retirees. Thank you for your explanations.
Sure. Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yes, I was just, I was just going to say, one, thank you for coming up and being willing to be upfront and speak to the public. My biggest question is going to be, on EMFRAC and in front of everyone, is what is our plan going to look like going forward so that receivership and entities coming into our community never happens to the city of Chester again?
So.
Long after I'm gone and grandchildren are here, we need to make sure that the city of Chester can always sustain itself by itself. And that's what I'm looking to see out of receivership, really.
That is an absolutely excellent question, Councilman Davis. It's one of the ones that, in every matter where I have worked on, is sort of the key question, right? Because what we're asking a lot of these groups to do, right, is give up something, right? I mean, receivership or bankruptcy isn't about like getting additional things, right? It's the opposite. And for anyone who wants to give up something or is willing to do so, right, they're asking, well, what is everybody else doing, right? And if I do it, how can you guarantee that everybody else is going to stick to the deal, right? And that's a really important thing. So in the EMFRAC that I had yesterday, and again, I'm happy to talk with Councilmore and happy to do a presentation here, if you all would like me to do, however you wish to do it, is I set out some parameters about what I think are necessary in order for, you know, essentially a deal, right, a solution, for lack of a better term, lack of a better word. And some of those are financial, some of those are operational, some of those are governance. But the last one, and not in order of importance, was basically a guarantee that the plan of adjustment, that the solution would be followed long-term. Now, there's models for that, right? In Philadelphia, they have a board called a PICA board, which is kind of like, they're like an overseeing board, but not in the same type of way as a receiver, right? They tend to approve budgets and such. But that is something that is part of the process we have to talk about and discuss, right? Because, you know, a lot of the issues that Chester faced were sometimes, sometimes there had been solutions in the past that weren't adhered to, right? Maybe changes in benefits that then, you know, weren't necessarily changed, right? And so, you know, and in order for any solution, let me just be clear here, any solution, long-term, is going to require everybody to follow it. And you're exactly right. And everybody's going to have to be comfortable with that. We're going to have to be very comfortable with that. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Was there a question that you had, Ms. Smith?
Yeah, I do have a question. Because this has been issued for five more years. And it seems like every time, excuse me, that the receiver takes these word utility companies to court, there are millions of dollars spent on legal fees, which could probably resolve if there was just a conversation of not having, just to have a conversation that would alleviate some of those problems. Every time you go to court, you don't pay one lawyer, you pay more than one lawyer to do a case. So if you look at all the years of the millions of dollars that have been spent in court cases, if the conversation was had, and the information was that was at the table earlier, was discussed, I don't think you can be in the situation I'm in. Life's hard just to bring that up, because if it's not free, you go to court, and everybody gets paid.
Yeah, and if I could note.
We all pay, and that's why fees go up, because somebody's got to pay for it, which is somebody else's.
Right. And if I could just sort of note that, you know, I agree 100% here. We'll talk a little bit next week here. We are engaged a lot, obviously, with the Chester Water Authority and litigation. We're trying to conduct an RFP process. That process will not go forward until we have clarity, excuse me, that process will not be consummated, right, awarded, or not, excuse me, executed on, until we get a decision from the Pennsylvania Supreme Court. I will note that I think we are dealing with a lot of motions being filed by the Chester Water Authority. I'll talk about those next week, preventing us from getting the kind of information that a creditor, excuse me, that a debtor would get in Chapter Nine. We are spending an incredible amount of money on legal fees. You know, there was a report in the Delco Times about how much, you know, the receivers' contracts were. We haven't seen similar legal fees on the CWA, right? It would be helpful to know, I think, from everybody, you know, what is the total cost of all this going on? Because we are trying to resolve this, right? And I know Ms. Smith, who sits on this CWA board, is an appointee. I'm glad to hear that and we're happy to sit down and, you know, as we've done before, and see if we can come up with a solution. But again, my responsibility, and this is, again, as, this is helpful to see here, again, just so everybody can get a sense of the situation that the receiver's in. You know, on the one hand, we're hearing, I think rightly, let's sit down and try and come to an agreement, right, and figure out what that is. On the other hand, we're hearing, well, no, what you really need to do is maximize the revenue you get, right? And so, like, just as we are sitting, and it wasn't intended that we have folks on different sides of the table, in the room, because I think everybody is trying to do the right thing on behalf of the city, but that's part of the issue that we have. And, you know, ultimately, from my end, even though I am a lawyer, ultimately, at the end of the day, it is best for us to reach a resolution than it is to litigate. It just always is.
Oh, we do. Oh, I'm sorry. You know, and I understand the city didn't get here overnight, and so it's not going to take overnight to fix it. You know, these issues have been going on for the last 30 years. You know, the city of Chester has been in Act 47 since 1995, been in state oversight since 1995. So I know that this isn't, it's not going to happen overnight, but it is my hope that we come to a resolution soon, because it is costing the taxpayers millions of dollars. And, you know, whether, you know, it's the state paying these fees or the city paying these fees. And bankruptcy is expensive, you know, because the city, we take on a lot of money. Even though we don't pay the salaries of, you know, the receiver and his team, we still pay a lot of money in legal fees. Before we was in receivership, we was paying $500,000 a year or so in lawyer fees. Now we pay about $4 million a year in attorney fees. And so, you know, this.
Full disclosure, I don't get that.
Yeah. And so this is an extremely expensive process that the taxpayers of Chester and Pennsylvania is paying for. And so it's my hope that your position is to work yourself out of a job, because I do not want to see the city 30 years from now still in receivership like the school district. And the school district is still in receivership after 30 years, and that's because people make so much money off of receivership. People are making money off the backs of Chester's residents. And millions, not no little bit of chump change, we're talking millions of dollars in receivership. And so I hope we're not like the school district and we stay in receivership for another 20-plus years. So I hope you're working yourself out of a job.
Councilman, I couldn't say it better, right? I am looking to do that. And so are members of the team. I think the numbers are a little bit different there in terms of the legal fees. I think we were higher than $500,000. I think we're less than $4 million, just as, just again, as, we have Mr. Troutman here who can keep me honest on that. But to your general point of working ourselves out, that's exactly right. The reality is, we're also running out of time, right? So part of it is not just like people want to stay on here and stay in receivership, it's that we're also running out of time. We were able, we've been able, from the city's perspective, if I just could, and then again, if there's any other questions, I'll answer them. If not, I'll sit down. But we, as a city, we've been able not to run out of money. Number one, because we filed for bankruptcy, because we're avoiding about $3.4 million in debt that we would have been paying the bondholders before. So that is a significant portion. Like, we would not have been able to make up, we would not have been able to make up that difference. The other thing is, is that going forward, you know, we likely have a deficit next year. The other thing is the ARPA funding, right? The ARPA funding is going to be running out. And that has, all of that has allowed us to avoid the fiscal cliff that we thought we were going to see in January of this year. But with those dollars going away, and we're using those dollars wisely, by the way, too, I want to be very clear about that. We're in the process of, the chief of staff is working on the construction of a public works garage, which we desperately need, so that our public works workers can work in a place of dignity and not in the place they'd worked before. But those are going away, right? And so the reality of kind of sitting around here and just being in here for decades, like, we can't. I'm going to tell you that right now. The math doesn't work. So the issue, though, what has been, and this is, again, I'm not making this as an excuse, right, but it is the facts. The two most important things that need to be resolved for clarity, right, so that everybody knows like what our situation is, what our potential paths forwards are, is the Supreme Court litigation over the Chester Water Authority. We have to know that. Because that answer is, you know, if the answer is no, we can't monetize it, you know, in a certain way, like, we're going to know that, all right? And that's going to foreclose several options. And again, I don't expect a decision on that until later this year, probably towards either the holidays or early next year. Just again, so folks know. The other is the bondholder litigation, about whether or not the city has to pay that $3.4 million a year. The bondholders are taking the position that even with bankruptcy, the city should have to pay that amount. It hasn't yet been scheduled for argument. We had, our attorneys had gotten some communication from the Third Circuit, where the court is, looking for dates in September. But to this point, we still don't have a sense of like when that is actually going to be argued. So until we know both of those, right, it's going to be very hard going forward to say, what's the plan, right? Because if I look at the retirees and say, well, what are you going to do? They're going to look at me and say, well, how much can you get for the water assets? All right? And I'm going to say, well, I don't know the answer until I know what we can do with the litigation. Yes, ma'am.
So you did say that we could schedule a time where we can have question and answer?
Yes, ma'am.
And so we can do that and have that posted. So with that being said.
I just have one more thing, Councilman, one more thing before we close out.
And I thank you that you will be able to give us full transparency of everything that's going on, so that our. that's going on, so that our community knows, because it's in their best interest. Full transparency.
Last thing, because I know this meeting is going over, but you just, you raised an important issue, and that is that the decision is still with the Supreme Court. And so, if the Supreme Court votes no, and you cannot monetize the water assets in the city, what is Plan B? Do you have a Plan B? Have you thought or thought about what that looks like, and how we can increase the city's tax revenue, so that way we can meet the operational cause and fund the pension? Because I think that's important, because it's an option. The Supreme Court can say yes, and they can say no. We don't know what their decision will be. So, if they do say no, what is Plan B?
Right. So, have we looked at that question? The answer is yes. So, are we discussing that inside? The answer is yes. What does it look like? It looks really ugly. That's what it looks like, to be very straight here. I mean, just to be very straight here, like, I mean, I'm not going to sit here and pull punches, right? Because there's, here's what you're left with. If you can't monetize, let's just hypothetically say you can't monetize, public or private, right? Just take it off the table, right? There's no way you can get these assets, right? Your two most significant areas are retiree benefits and employees. That's it. And taxes, right? And the tax base, again, we already can't, the city itself cannot already support, its tax base cannot already support where we are right now, even without paying the $3.5 million, et cetera, right? So, those are the only places where you can really look, right? And that's the question. It becomes a question of, what kind of services do you want to provide for the city? It becomes a question of, what kind of benefits can you afford for the retirees, right? And it becomes, what kind of taxes can the public, and fees can the public live with, right? That's the answer, right? And again, I'm not trying to hide it, I'm not trying to scare people, but like, I am trying to be honest about it. Like, it's ugly. It's very ugly.
And we can talk about that ugliness.
Yes, ma'am, we can, yes. Don't want to end on that. How do we end on that?
And answers.
Looking forward to working together. Yeah, it is. It is.
And again, full transparency is all that any of our community members are asking for.
Sure.
And with that being said, I'm calling this meeting to a close.
Thank you.